All right, it is seven oh five and. This is the initial meeting of the Rules and Regulations Subcommittee for the Bill of the Planning Board. And let's go into attendance. Mr. Ventreska, are you here?
Present.
Okay, I'm here and looking for Mr. Parker. Right, not joined us yet, and then we have an ex officio member, our Director of Planning and Economic Development. Ms. Malgaria, you're here?
Here.
All right, brutalize that name, didn't I?
It's all right.
All right, so. For first agenda item that we have is after roll call is the organization. And so. I guess, you know, do, you know, with with three folks, three act, three members and then ex officio, do we really need to organize? Or. I mean, we can go ahead and name a ahead of this. I'll take nominations if we want to, if we want to so do this.
Blake, I think the board the longest, so.
You want Chairman or Secretary Blake, because I don't want secretary.
So you do have staff on this committee, so the secretary's job is pretty light, it's just making sure staff does it.
What do you want to do, Blake? You pick.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take Chair, that's fine, yeah.
Tony, was that a motion?
Make a motion to nominate Blake as Chair of the Rules and Regs Subcommittee.
All right, I'll second that motion. All right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I guess we have to do a roll call vote since we're remote. Okay. I'm an aye. Mr. Tony, how are you?
I'm an aye.
An aye, okay, very good. And has Mr. Parker joined us?
Does not.
No, he has not?
Nope.
Okay, two zero unanimous. For those present. All right.
Sarah and I started discussing goals.
All right.
Wanted to fill the other seats, but.
Yeah, we can, we can, if we need to, we'll deal with that. Okay, so, so goals, yes, what are the, what, what are the goals here? I'll go ahead and, and I'd like to hear your perspective on that, Tony, before I go into my on time.
Okay, so. This was based, must be a pretty limited document is what I was hoping. That would just be how the board interacts with each other, not how the public interacts with the board and that sort of thing. So as example. You know, how things get on the agenda, that sort of, as an example. Today, actually emailed. The Planning Director at Concord announced that their planning board actually had the document like this, and they did not. However, she sent me over their historic District District Commission did, but it was adopted in August of 2012. So it's kind of lacking updated, you know, as far as. Open meeting and ethics things that probably need to be updated in there. So if we go down that road, I would say that instead of citing the ethics law or the open meeting law, we point to it. I mean, instead of verbally writing, we just point to it to that way if it gets changed because said this document is thirteen years old. You know, we don't have to always update that section of it, talks about different things like. Open meeting law, public participation, parliamentary procedures used. General meeting protocols. As different sections, so that's kind of. So when I saw the conflict of interest issues, recusals, that this was pointing to talking to the. To the town clerk and you tend more to talk to Ethics Commission now than than ever before, so that's why I said it's kind of. Needs to be updated a little bit. And then also what to do if the Chair is absent. You know, can't make the meeting, obviously, you know, do we, we should point to Robert's rules, I mean, it's simple, the Vice Chair takes over. The Chair or Vice Chair aren't there, then other committees have served on the next in line is has been, you know. The Secretary, so, you know, things like that, just so make sure that we have meeting can meet in case something happens, but we still have a quorum otherwise. And then is a separate session, this is executive session. You know, but whatever, it's kind of more, so that's kind of what I was thinking. It's more how we interact with each other. And not, you know, because we're going to be working on those other documents anyway, so.
All right, very good.
Then obviously, we can look at the what are select ones. Their policies in there, you know, what they have and kind of maybe remembering some of that stuff as well, so. But I just want to get an idea what other people were doing, so.
Yeah, no, I, I think it's great that you got the copy of the Historical Commission and, and we have a data point that the Concord. Planning Board doesn't have a similar document. So I think that that's, you know, that's, that's very helpful, you know, we can, we can. Check around to see what, what other surrounding communities have for, for these, these, these types of documents. As well, so I think that would be, that would be good. I, I agree that we need to have some clarity on how we interact with each other. And, and maybe, you know, how the agenda gets set, how the agenda gets approved. You know, timelines for, you know, making sure that materials. Are adequately, you know, provided to the, to the, to the board in a timely manner. You know, are all important, you know, I think that, you know, quite frankly, you know, we need some provisions in terms of expectations. For externals in terms of, you know, if we don't get a document until. Certain amount of time before the meeting, you know, in our likelihood, it is not going to be considered and is going to drive, you know, may, may drive. A continuance of the meeting just because of lack of information. I think that we also need to deal and, and I, and, you know. You know, we need some stuff established so that the other departments can understand why. The Planning Department folks are reaching out to them to ensure that we do get timely receipt of materials. You know, we, you know, and in our, in our relationship with the. You know, peer reviewer. You know, that whole process, you know, I think needs to be, you know, you know. You know, you know, better articulated for, for the board. You know, I also, you know, we have. You know, the duties of the, of the Planning Board are actually, you know, enumerated. And, you know. You know. You know, I, you know, it's, it's, it's in our charter. You know, the, it's in the bylaws. You know, we've master law also articulates some of our rules responsibilities, some of these overlap. But a number of these are separate and distinct. And so I, I think that, you know, I've, I've, I've stated this. For a long time, you know, that the Planning Board's responsibilities are more than just transactional. But that is the, the great preponderance of where we spend our time and effort. And, and that's important, of course, but. You know, we need to make sure that we're doing the, the other things. And, and so, you know, as well, and so there is a need to strike an appropriate balance. You know, for this, but I think that, that, you know, because it's not been delineated and, and because of the history. Of how we have acted. You know, we have, we have lost a major portion and a major element of what we're supposed to be doing. And, you know, so, so for example. You know, the Planning Board shall make studies and prepare plans concerning the resources. Possibilities and needs of the town, we have never done that during my tenure on the board. You know, there are things that happen. That we may be given a tacit nod toward. But the reality is, we have not done that, that's the number one responsibility in our. You know, in the, in the charter. And so, you know, that, that troubles me. Deeply. You know, and so that is something that we need to remedy. From my point of view, and so that's a key element that we need to, to address here now. Maybe our, our, you know, professional staff. You know, will feel that that's, you know, that's, you know, that is not in fact the case that we are doing that.
Love it, I mean, we're about to kick off the master plan, there's the housing production plan from, what is it, five years ago, but we haven't done a lot of big planning. And what has been done, I think, there's always the committees that get kind of delegated down, ultimately, you guys. The Planning Board as a whole should have been running that, but I love the idea to make sure that that is really highlighted in your rules and regs, because. That shouldn't be an afterthought.
Right, yeah, so we have, we have a water need in this town. Okay, we don't have a water plant. You know, anyway, that, that's just, 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 you know. Air grab, just because I despise seeing the, you know, and it comes every year, doesn't matter how much water we have, how much rain we've had, how much snow we've had. You know, we're in a, we're in a van already. You know, in spite of all the water, all the rain that we've had. So anyway, you know, and the problem is, is that we squandered the opportunity that we had as a town. Fifteen years ago. To, to put in place and posture ourselves that we'd have an alternate source of water than the Concord River. But we still need to, you know, that still needs to be addressed and, and there are elements in the master plan, believe it or not. They talk about this, but today, we have done nothing on that, you know, so anyway. To go full circle to, to our, you know, the, the, the Board's conversation. You know, earlier, so anyway. I also would like to see this done in, in relatively short order, I don't want this, this effort to drag on for. A, an indeterminate amount of time, I think that there's, there's a, you know, a lot that we can do, I think plagiarism in this case, I think is good. Do I think we need a hundred seventy-four page document like the Select Board? No, but if you really look at that document, which I have. You're going, you know, we're going to find that, you know, more than half of that document is, you know, dealing with, you know. Assessing the time.
It's their whole thing, etc., yeah.
So.
It's applications for grants and everything, you know.
Right, so there, there are elements that, that, that we need to, need to address, now this also needs to be a living document. You know, that, you know, that will, will end up undergoing some periodic review, you know, et cetera, so. Anyway, so I agree and, and I don't have any, any qualms, you know, I think that, that, you know, there are key elements that we should focus on first. You know, and, and a lot of that is with, you know, the meetings themselves and, and. You know, how, you know, what, how to get things on the agenda, et cetera, you know, I, I do like. The language that the, the Select Board has used in terms of, of, you know, pretty much anyone can get a, an item on the agenda, there's just a. You know, we just need to make sure that there's certain timelines that are adhered to so that we can, that we can make that, make that happen. You know, I also agree that the Chairman needs to have an understanding of what's going to be on the agenda and approve the agenda. And so then we may get into a little bit of tension over, you know, allowing anyone to put anything on the agenda. But also, you know, you know, what, what happens when, when that agenda item is something that the Chair is opposed to? Anyway, that's, we'll have to go through, work through some of those details. Anyway.
Yeah, Blake, just to your point, this historic district document is sixteen pages long, which includes the cover and, and two pages for the index. So that's, you know. So that it's not like the hundreds, whatever it wanted to select, it's, it's fairly concise.
Right.
You know, and there are some things in this that we wouldn't even have in ours, because there'd be no reason to, so it would even be shorter than that, so. Just to give you an idea of what we're looking at, you're looking at.
Right, yeah.
An document that should mean it does a page is long total.
Right, so, so we get into some, some, so, you know, my original, you know, idea, you know, concept of this was that. You know, there may be some value in. You know, taking a look and having a, a section set aside for, you know, each of the key responsibilities that we have, obviously. You know, there, there's repetition, for example, in the, you know, you know, the subdivision oversight. You know, that's, that's covered in multiple places as it should be, and, you know, we already have some, some regs on that. You know, that, that have been done, and then, you know, Denise is, is, you know, you know, started working on that process a number, you know, you know, two years ago, and. We've kind of.
Did not pass legal review. The B two process just is too messy and they weren't quite sure and. Before we pick that up again, we want to get out of the current litigation, so that way, if there's any questions, we can kind of resolve it all.
You talking about the three oh five litigation?
Yeah.
Okay, just want to make sure, there isn't another one.
Rules, we'll let that one finish out, get any overall legal interpretation we might have as far as that being a process, what it is, what it's supposed to be. And then we can update the wording in our rules to match.
Yeah, so that makes sense, where, where I was going with that was, you know, we do have a, a, you know, we have existing rules, we have a review that has been underway. And, you know, last update I had, and, and again, I, I, you know, I hear things and filter them, you know, was that, you know, it was not. High enough priority to be brought forward with all the other parallel activities that we had going on, but that we're going to revisit it soon, so. The fact that it is, has had some legal scrutiny, you know, is, is good, it's a step in the right direction. And, you know, and at some point in time, you know, we'll, we'll figure out how, you know, you know, how that's going to go, and that's, you know. I'm, I'm. I'm just the Vice Chair of the, of the, of the Board right now, so. Anyway, but we could, you know, this, this body can, can ask, you know, for some action, but again, we have a whole number of things that we need to do. We probably, you know, we, we need to sit down and prioritize that, and I mean, all, you know, all of different aspects that we do. To put together a, a, a implementation strategy for getting this document created and updated. Any more, anything else you wanted to add?
Tony or to me?
You, yeah, you can, you're, you're talking.
I always have more to say.
Yeah, so, yeah.
So one of the things I did want to make sure that we mentioned is those other two rules that you guys have, which are not the general. How to be aboard rules, which you guys are missing, but it's the subdivision rules and then what we call the. What do we call it? The Planning Board Guidelines and Policies. But then when you open it up, the title is Guidelines for Site Plan Special Permits and Special Permits. So it really just, these two different documents are how to apply to the Planning Board for applications. And they don't even cover all the possible applications you have. So we have a different document for scenic roads, we have nothing.
So was NIMCOG working on that stuff, wasn't that part of what they were looking at?
So NIMCOG is specifically looking at tearing out the site plan bylaw. And then as far as the site plan rules and regs, when we look at the site plan bylaw, why do we need to have an entire section that says, here's what your application submission should include? You could absolutely cut that out and put it in your rules and regs, town meeting does not care whether your plan is. You know, twenty-four by thirty-six inches, or if it's eleven by seventeen inches, that's, that's your rule, that's not. A town bylaw, but right now, it's in the bylaw instead of in the rules, so there's some cleanup that we can do within that, but for the main part. When NIMCOG is really trying to look at is the policies and how it works, rather than the paperwork, ideally. If it doesn't clutter up anything too greatly, I'd love to remove those random application submissions and put those in your rules for site plans.
But why, but would an applicant then look, and are this document that we're going to try and create for something like that? I think that was trying to keep those things separate.
Yeah, any applicant should be looking at the bylaws and the rules for whatever they're applying. I don't know, go ahead.
I'm sorry, so, so this gets into a little bit of the confusion, you know, of. The Subcommittee is for the Rules and Regulations, you know, but the, in, in a, a measure of those exist. You know, but, you know, the, you know, the, there is the policies and procedures piece. Which, you know, when we ask for clarification, you know, that is a subset, or is that, that is within this Rules and Regulations piece, so. You know, part of this is, 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 you know, this is going to be a tapestry of sorts, and so how do we weave this together? You know, what are the different elements that are there and then articulating where they are? You know, and frankly, you know, we need to put in there how often they get reviewed, how they're going to get reviewed, and then what is the, what, you know, how do we, how do we want to, you know, refresh those? You know, and, and that, that should be. Easy to say, but should be relatively easy to, 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 you know, express that in a, in a, in a document.
Well, Blake, you could.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, you could make this committee a permanent Subcommittee of the Planning Board, and that way, if at least tries to force. The review of this at least once a year, to ensure it's compatible once it's done.
Yeah, so again, those are details we can work through, whether it's every year, every other year, every three years. You know, I. You know, it, again, you know, it, it, there's, there's, there's some things that we can. You know, we, we, we can, again, I don't want to overstructure things, but. You know, you know, we have a, we have twelve meetings a year, and so, you know, you know, there, there are ways to sit down and say. You know, January, every January is going to be. You know, you know, you know, you know, review of Document X or, or, or whatever is, is, is. You know, becoming one of the standing agenda items, you know, that, that is going forward, going to, you know, to always be. On there in addition to our transactional efforts and actions.
See, yeah, my, two total considerations, one was just figuring out how your, your main rules and regs, I guess, would be an umbrella document for those other two. And then my other thought is, within the zoning bylaw, it likes to refer to the Planning Board rules. A few times, so we need to kind of scrub through every time it refers to per the Planning Board rules, and we're like, oh, what rules are we supposed to have? Let's make sure we actually have those.
Okay.
But those are my only considerations, so.
Well, very good. Okay, what else?
So just as far as the notes I'm taking to make sure that the minutes are good, so as far as discussing goals. Tony is looking for board behavior, like how things get on the agenda. He pulled up a Concord example with the Historic District Commission, specifically, we should make sure it points to Robert's rules, we should be citing, not quoting any outside laws. Blake mentions wanting to check more towns examples, agrees with the clarity within the board, also some expectations and timelines of external requirements and applications. But also highlighting townwide plans and your other duties, maybe a section for each one of those. And then setting up a path to update routinely, and then I added two aspects, which we're considering how to incorporate the. Appendices, the plans we already have, and then checking the bylaw for references to rules. Does that sound good for a list of goals? Or maybe action items, a little bit of both?
Yeah, yeah, that's reasonable, yeah.
All right. So if you are done on discussing goals, your next agenda item is the meeting schedule.
All right. So, yeah. So anyway, I'm, I was glad to have this, this meeting on, on a Thursday, again, I, I, we already have. Planning Board meetings once a month on, on Mondays, actually, the rest of the year is going to be Tuesdays, it seems, but. In general, it's supposed to be Mondays. So. I, you know, I think that. You know, you, you think twice a week, twice a month is going to be necessary, or go monthly for now, Tony?
I'm wondering if we do twice a month to get it going and then we back it off. Once we get to a point.
Uh, yeah.
Because you said you want to hurry up and get this done, so I'm like, if, you know, we mean, it's already, two weeks from now, you're looking at, you're bumping into the fourth. You know, it's the week before the fourth, you know, until then, if you, you're not going to do it that week. So then you do it the following week, you're a month out.
Yeah. Well, so let's, let's, what's the second and fourth Thursdays of the month look like for you?
Um, doable. Yeah, they should be doable.
Okay, all right, so I think we'll tentatively, tentatively go with that, and we'll have to make sure that, that this works with.
The fifth, the fifth Thursday until July, I can't make, so.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, the tenth and the twenty-fourth should work.
Yeah, so I, I may have a, generally, the Town Manager Screening Committee meetings are, are earlier, they're, they're five or six. In the afternoon, so, you know, in theory, I, I should be able to be free in time for, for seven o'clock if.
I have no problem starting, if we're doing Zoom, we can sit at home inside at seven thirty, you know, that's not an issue. I seem to recall, we all meetings used to start at seven thirty.
Yeah, well, we'll, 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 you know, you know, we'll aim for seven o'clock for now.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, very good.
So seven o'clock, second and fourth Thursday of the month.
Pending your third.
For now, yeah.
Yeah, 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 all this is.
Did you want to try to?
Is that, can, can you, can you or, or the Junior Planner accommodate that, those timeframes?
The second Thursdays are CPC, I was hoping you were going to go early at like five or six o'clock, because we have a lot of meetings in a month, but we can make seven o'clock work.
Yeah, I just, I couldn't make five o'clock, I'd literally be walking into my truck.
That's okay.
All right.
And then as far as meeting schedule, did you also want to kind of forecast an overall project timeline within this? Like a couple of meetings, when do you think you'll start drafting, pulling together, reviewing? What month might you want to take it back to the Planning Board for a check-in, even if you're not done yet?
Yeah, so, so I think that we should have updates as a minimum every other Planning Board meeting. You know, on, on how progress is, is going here, does that sound reasonable, Tony?
Well, you're the Chairman of this body and you're the Vice Chair, so you can just, you know. It's, it'll be your thing to do regardless, so I mean, I think, when's our next meeting, July?
The Tuesday after the second.
Yeah, so the fifteenth, right, so at that point, we've met tonight, well, we would have met three times by that meeting. So we should be able to give him something at, at that point, you know.
Yeah.
Even if we don't have a draft document, at least saying, hey, this is a framework of some, that we've worked on something.
Yeah, so let's, let's, subject to the Real Board's Chair's approval, we'll want to try and give an update on the, on the fifteenth of July.
Sounds great, and then there's always the. The recurring committee updates line item, which is usually at the end of a very tiring meeting, everyone's kind of saying quick stop, but that's really the perfect. Place for this too, so even if you're not your own line item. Give them the information anyway. Exactly. All right, there's nothing else on the agenda but adjournment.
Well, I would do want to ask you a quick question. Hold on, I would do want to have asked you a quick question, if you don't mind. Um, no, Kat. Where are we with, uh, long range master plan? Have you, have you heard from anybody since I got you here?
Um. I, did you get an email from me that said you, Mary and?
Yeah, I knew, I have that.
Get that email? Okay.
I have the, I have this.
Reply all to it.
Okay, I have that, but I didn't know if you've reached out to the others, the other committees staff.
Yeah, I emailed all three of you saying, hey, thanks for being on this committee, let's go. Um, so. Unless I didn't hit send, but you said you got it.
No, you, no, I didn't know if you'd reached out to the other two committees that haven't, that we don't have names for yet.
Oh, so the school committee was actually meeting the night that we realized they had a vacancy, so we won't get that appointment until. August, when they start meeting again.
All right, well, that's my problem for them then.
And then the moderator is looking to, um, advertise all of his various appointment vacancies, so. That'll be coming soon, but we at least have three out of five, so we can get going.
Okay, we'll get going, okay. Cool, thank you.
Absolutely. Chair.
All right.
All right, anything else, any other items we need to discuss? Otherwise, I'll accept the motion to adjourn. Okay, I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, thank you.
Thirty-six, cool.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.